Good evening.
Good evening.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, how are you Frank? Frank, whatever. Francis.
You only said half the name.
She said Saunders.
She said Saunders.
She said Saunders.
No, the first part didn't come through. Who here is?
Spinks?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Nizak?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Our law director will not be with us, he's under the weather tonight, so I hope he feels better soon. Counsel, you have the minutes of the work session of May 21st, 2018. Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, can motion for acceptance? Johnutus, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Spinks?
Same.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2018. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Nizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Same.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2018. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Nizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Same.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the public hearing of May 21st, 2018, the tax budget. Corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janutus, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Same.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
And we have no presentations tonight. Resolution number 2523-18 on your own business.
Being a resolution approving and accepting the proposed 2018 tax budget for the year January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
And we have a motion for suspension by Nizak, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Janutus, second by Spinks. That would be you.
Do you have any comments? We'll make a quick comment. This actually applies for all of these ordinances that we're going to be looking at passing, hopefully passing this evening. When we talk about the tax budget, we're looking at the reasons that you want to pass this is because you're going to be establishing your millage rate for next year, 21.7 mils, same as last year. Your local government funds will be approved, counties allowed to distribute those to us because of the adoption of the budget. And the county will establish the city's district and estimate the resources, we'll estimate where we're going to be at the end of the year and what we're allowed to appropriate up to later. But it does not appropriate any monies for the coming year. We'll go through that process starting in August with the departments, finishing off accounts from October, November, and finalization of the budget process in December of 2018 for beginning in January 1st of 2019. So I ask council to look at these ordinances in front of us. I will mention two of the things ahead of time, so you won't have to readdress me if not necessary. When we look at the refuse fee that we're going to be establishing, it's the same as what we did, $14 per month. The street lighting will increase to 1.7 mils from 1.6 mils based upon valuation that were established through the city fund accounting that was reported to us. At this point in time, that explains where we're at at this point on all of those resolutions and ordinances. Thank you.
Questions? Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9608-18.
An ordinance to levy assessments for the expense of garbage, refuse collection, recycling, and disposal within the city of Bedford, Ohio during the year 2018 and declaring an emergency.
So I wish to, we need a, in time. Motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Nizak. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Resolution number 2524-18.
Resolution declaring the necessity to improve certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
And again, this, the next two are our annual, keeping the lights on ordinances. Motion for third and final, or suspension, excuse me, by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Resolution number 9609-18.
An ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Third and final by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9609-18.
An ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of certain streets in the city of Bedford, Ohio by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Nizak, second by Saunders. Same thing, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9610-18.
Being an ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of the street and public places of the city of Bedford, Ohio by lighting the same in accordance with resolution number 2524-18 and ordinance number 9609-18 declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Question, go ahead.
Is this levying including the new streets we have up at Pius? That's the Hubble Avenue, yes, we've added that on the ordinance if you'll notice. It's in the ordinance already? No. Or we have to amend it to put that? We have to amend it to put it on. You're just ordering out, you're passing, you whipped it on there.
They have no.
Passing it on third reading, except first reading, it wasn't in there. Yes, it was. Yes, it was. Was it in there? Okay, I'm just, I just want to clarify. Thank you. It was on there and we've added it this year and the valuation will be established by the county to put on that property.
All right, thank you. Hubble Lane and Hubble Circle.
Yeah, that is correct.
Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Florrie?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, just a reminder that the strawberry festival is this weekend, so everybody look into down there, hopefully fingers crossed the weather will cooperate. We are scheduling a meeting with Dominion as they're wrapping up the area of Taylor and Broadway. We have notified them that we're not going to permit them to proceed with the next step of the project until we have that meeting. There's some concerns that we have, some things that they still need to work to address, as well as concerns on previous restoration work that they still need to come out and do. We've been adamant with that, that we're going to require those things to take place before they would actually move forward and start their next project. We hope to have that meeting in the next couple of weeks and then we will go from there. We're going to be working to submit our county community development block grant, which is due in a couple of weeks. We're actually going to be prepared to submit it this week. This was a quick turnover, the county just announced about three weeks ago that they were going to provide this grant. They have eliminated some of the provisions that were in place, as has been typical in previous years, for instance, public meeting, consultmatic ordinances, all of which we've already done. We kind of knew this was going to be a last minute release of the funding, so we did have a public meeting earlier in the year and council did pass legislation authorizing us to apply for it. What we're going to do is we're going to be applying to resurface all of Ellenwood and Kenyon. We believe that if the amount of capital that's being invested in the Ellenwood Community Center, Senior Center, those two streets are the main streets and we can use that as leverage that will help us score, help our score higher. So we are going to finish the middle of that grant and get that in there. In addition, those two streets were last done, I believe, in 1991. As many of you know, you know, we are going out to bid for our road program, of which we're going to do the worst of the worst. By applying for this grant, it helps us increase our amount of capital we're spending in streets from $400,000 as we committed to during the tax increase to, if we're successful, it'll be $550,000 and we can get two extra streets. Not going to get caught up overnight, but if we can utilize these funds to get those streets done, it'll be well worth it. I did want to mention that we do have crews going out on Rockside as well as Columbus and some other streets to do some in-house repairs. We did get grant funding for, through the county, grant funding for all of the material used for those repairs, specifically crack ceiling. So we're going to go ahead and do that work in-house and then submit the price per, or the cost for materials to the county for them to reimburse us. I do want to mention that our outdoor municipal pool opens this Saturday the night. Mazda Bedford has submitted their plans, we're going through the approval process now. They are keeping their fingers crossed, they want to put shovels in the ground in next month, sometime in July, so hopefully we're moving forward with that. And lastly, I want to commend Jen, the economic development office, she worked to submit a $400,000 plus grant to the county, which we were successful on. And this is going to be earmarks for demolitions. We submitted about five residential homes, the Moon Glow property, as well as some other funds to assist in other projects should they take place. But it's a substantial grant. For those of you that remember, we applied two years ago and we got $600,000 that helped clean up some other areas, so this is a huge plus. So there's still some steps that have to go through the process. One of the things we are going to do, because it was very easy to work with as we did last time, is work with the land bank. What we do is we partner with the land bank, so we don't have to go out for formal bids, we don't have to act as the general to handle and maintain all of these demos, the land bank acts as our agent and they handle all of that. So there's some hurdles, it's not, nothing's going to come down in the next two weeks, but we hope that as we move forward through the summer, some of these residential properties that have sat in our neighborhoods for years and years and years will come down, as well as the Moon Glow and some other things as we work towards redevelopment over there. So kudos to Jen and the staff in that. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director, would you like to introduce your associate?
Yeah, with us today is Jennifer Holland, the Assistant Finance Director for the city of Bedford, and she's kind of following along here, see what we're doing, especially with the budget process and watching what we're doing, keeping an eye, making sure I do it correctly. The Bedford Rotary Club, you know, very successful weekend this weekend, but I'd like to thank, we had a lot of volunteers and those people who plan and run the program, they give up a lot of their time, especially on the weekend, putting the mirror there this weekend, helping us out and everything. And it's very important that the public has these people that go out there, you allow that the public to enjoy and get this type of entertainment out there on your square. And it takes a lot of effort, a lot of money, and I appreciate the public coming out and forward with, you know, patronizing all the people that we did have there and ourselves, and it was very successful in that respect, even though we did have some rain on Sunday. But kudos to everybody who helped on that and those that gave up a lot of their time, so I appreciate them. That's the end of my report.
Including you, Frank, we did talk to that, I know. Counsel, Mr. Saunders.
All right, where do I want to start? Mike, do we have a start date from the county on Center Road yet?
No, we do not, we have not even received the pre-count meeting schedule yet, so.
I know they're bidding it. And I didn't know if we had heard yet on any of that. Are we certain Dominion's done on that street before they come through? Just to be sure. I know they did the side streets off of there, the main line went all the way down, but I don't want to have them coming back through in another year to start chopping it up after the county spends all the federal money, because most of it's federal money that's coming through on that to do that.
There's no reason that they should tear that road up. The only thing, there's a couple of spots in the tree lines that they have to clean up, the restoration work, but as far as taking up the street, no.
Okay. Speaking of Dominion, Broadway and Taylor, they cut several slices through there across the street and whatnot. I would hope that they would grind out at least the Taylor Road lakes, Broadway there, so that we don't have strips and stripes and cuts all over the place, similar to what they did here on Center Road, at least that one little patch there, so it'd be more uniform for the time being, if we could get them to look into that, because with just the strips that they're doing, those will come back to haunt us in a couple of years. Columbus Road, you mentioned that our crews were out there working, they're actually doing the full fence pavement repairs in the asphalt?
In some areas, yeah.
Because somebody's doing a lot of those and some of those big speed bumps that are on the road, it appears they're actually digging it out and replacing it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's all in-house.
On that one. Let's see, water line on Ellenwood, that lower section I thought wasn't done because we were looking at replacing that water line, because that water line has so many breaks in it already. If we resurfaced it, the house.
No, I mean, we replaced, we replaced the top portion of Ellenwood, the bottom portion, I don't believe.
Bottom portion, they have a lot of water, made the breaks.
There were two areas that were repaired about four or five years ago, since then we haven't had any issues.
Yeah, I know.
I can get that report and find out specifically.
I just hate to think that we put new asphalt down and then have to chop holes into it at a later date, or sooner than later, but anyway. Pavement markings, do we have any idea when we're going to do them? Most communities have already started. And then on top of that, are we going to use the proper paint this year? Because we did not use pavement yellow and we did not use pavement white last year, and they faded out to the point where you can't even see them. So we should use the proper paint this year for the roadways, and do we have any timetable as when we're going to start that? I know our crews are limited, and this is one of those items that I keep saying every year, we should contract out, because we'd get it done right away instead of spending the entire summer doing, but.
Yeah, I mean, obviously there's a significant cost with that as well, while contracting it out, yet it's a tough balancing act.
But when you're short on crews.
Typically, we get it done sometime latter part of June, early July. I can get you a schedule and provide that.
Okay, because, you know, it'd be nice to have pavement marking. Some of the roads right now are so bad, you can't even tell where the lanes are anymore. So, and then a quick thing, we've had a garbage sale going on on Logan for three weeks up near Vlaine. That yard front and back is full of furniture and all kinds of stuff. It's not a welcome sight, especially if they're going to the hospital, because you can really see it over there. He ought to wrap that up, if we can get that wrapped up. I know he's still got a lot of stuff out there and he's, and a lot of it's been raining down, and some of that's living room furniture. So if we can do something about that, and at the same time get him to finish the siding on his house, it's been that way since last year. So, and then a quick comment, I voted no on the garbage fee like I do every year, because I do not feel it's a fee that's fair. We've got houses that put out two, three, four cans every week, and we've got senior citizens who put one bag in a massive can. We're, those that are only doing the one bag are subsidizing those that constantly use numerous cans every week, and I think we ought to have a limit on the number of cans, or your fee goes up per can after that. That's the reason I voted no on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes.
Good evening, everyone, how are you this evening? First thing, I'd like to let you know that Ellenwood will be closed even longer than we thought, this is like many of our home improvement projects at home, where one thing leads to another, so we're going to need a little bit more time. We're now looking at the end of July before we get back into Ellenwood. This weekend, this past weekend, the Bedford Downtown Alliance, which is a revitalization program that we're putting together here in Bedford, did the Dunham House and Sedlon Garden cleanup, it's the Help the Pukas Garden cleanup, we had a pretty good turnout. I'd like to thank everyone who came and helped clean up the front of the Dunham House. We were unable to get to the Sedlon Garden and we're going to try to set another date so that we can work on the Sedlon Garden. Leading into, the Bedford Downtown Alliance has issued what we're calling the Bedford Challenge, which is what we'd like to have every resident in Bedford commit to doing two hours of volunteer time that will either benefit Bedford or is done here in Bedford. If you do the Bedford Challenge and you let me know, you'll get a little prize at the end of June. So think about the areas where you can help out in Bedford, dedicate two hours, send me an email at heather@bedfordward5.com, and I'll add you to that list and make sure you get your little prize at the end of June. We are also scheduling, tentatively scheduling, a Bedford cleanup project for 6/22. I'll have more details about that soon, we'll post it on social media and the bedfordward5.com website. This will be during, going around Bedford and picking up trash. We're going to be doing it in conjunctions with a program called Litter Bugs. If we can get it going, you'll get a free t-shirt if you participate. Also, we will be having cornhole at parties in the park, so you can come and listen to the music and come back and play some cornhole. We can explain a little bit more about what Bedford Downtown Alliance is looking to accomplish. We would also like to encourage you to follow us on Facebook. We also have a community survey that we're currently conducting, that will let us know where we should focus our efforts in the downtown area and what, what issues are concerning Bedford residents the most, so that we can focus most of our attention on those issues starting out. I would also like to let everyone know, there's still time to sign up your child for the playground program. My son attends the playground program, he has lots and lots of fun there. It's a great program, it's $500 for the summer, and they do as much in that program as my children did when I had them in daycare for the summer. They go on field trips once a week, they go to the pool once a week, lunches are provided, I believe they're hot lunches, are provided. So if you have a child or grandchild, or you know of a child that's looking for something to do for the summer, the playground program at the rec center is an excellent choice. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Mrs. Spinks.
I'd like to start by offering a note to the family of Leo Serna, who passed away this past Sunday. It was just overwhelming, the attendance at the viewing on Thursday, there was over a thousand people. Boy, the son, one of the sons says it's close to like 1,500. They even stayed past a little bit to get everybody to give their condolences, and just, he's going to be very missed by several people. He was one of the first people I kind of met when I came into, 18 years ago, to Cleveland, to Bedford area, and his wife, my condolences goes out to that, because I know they found out, didn't know that, but they were, lived by each other where they grew up, by each other, they were neighbors, so they were sweethearts for a long time, so, and best friends, so, condolences goes to that family. Also, Mike, as I was talking to you today on the phone, I mentioned that you heard the surprise of my voice, as there was about 10 deer come flying across my backyard and chasing them, was a rather large coyote. Well, after I got off the phone with you, that coyote came back. And it's very strange, because normally coyotes do not come out during the day like that, they usually don't prey during the day, and he was rather large, and he stood in my backyard for quite a while. So it was a little concerning, I did try to call the non-emergency, and the lady, nobody ever showed up, nobody ever came. So that's a little alarming, but, you know, the kid, school gets out on Thursday, a lot of kids, there's a lot of kids playing around, so that's kind of scary, you don't know what's going on with that animal, to be out in the, you know, out around people like that during the day. Also, Mike, any update on the grass at Chanel?
It was called. I know originally we had sent them their letter, however, they did send their own crew out and did cut that, that was about two weeks ago. We've gone out again, obviously, as we spoke about, it was called in on Friday, to our contractor, it was late on Friday, so it should be cut any day. We are not required to send an additional letter, we had already sent in the one, it's up to his, it's his responsibility to maintain that. It's obviously, it's high, so we're going to, it was called into our crew, so hopefully they get to it shortly, as with the other properties.
Yeah, I know that they're cutting it back, because I know there's still a few games and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's actually being taken care of by the individuals who are utilizing the baseball field, that's kind of the agreement Sam had, or the previous owner had, with That's kind of the agreement Sam had, or the previous owner had with the group, a baseball organization that does camps and things of that nature. They do the fields and the grass, but the front and the football field is the high grass. And he has a contractor for them, but obviously, I don't know if he's on the once a month schedule or what, but we're gonna, our crew's gonna be out there to handle it.
Yeah, because I got more calls from residents on Willard that were concerned because, again, it's getting real hot and on their fence that backs up to that property. And the front just looks, it looks horrible as far as from the high school, so. Next up is like Mike mentioned, the strawberry festival this weekend. Hopefully, we're gonna have some really good weather Friday night, kicking off with a really good band, Blues the Ville from the Seven Eleven. And then Saturday, of course, our famous car show. See Rich back there? I know he's ready for that. It's fantastic. It's better and better every year. Strawberry best, strawberry dessert contest is back on Sunday. That will be at three P.M. And the poor mayor's gonna have to judge that again. Need to have your desserts, they have to contain strawberries. It can be anything, but the main ingredient has to be strawberries. You need to turn it in at one forty-five at the gazebo stage. It will be judged at three P.M. A lot of new stuff going on this year, a lot of great entertainment. Entertainment starts at one o'clock on Saturday with the Bedford Community Band, which has got really, really good. They get better every year. For a while, it was a little iffy this year. They've got really, really good. And then we have a new band, the Cross Street Traffic Band. They play a lot of different, they play country, they play rock, they play a little bit of everything. And then the nighttime from the Seven Eleven o'clock will be the Sweetie Pie Swing Dance Party Band. And there will be professional swing dancers there giving lessons, something new. Try to add something, go along with the theme of the car show, so excited about that. New stuff every year, gets better, trying to really make people sick of strawberry stuff as they leave. That's what the strawberry festival's about, so a lot of hard work goes into that as well. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizek.
Thank you. Well, since Sandy already touched upon the condolences for Mr. Serna, I wanted to express condolences to him and his family too. He was a longtime merchant of Bedford. Originally, they came from Pennsylvania and he's been here over, well, over sixty-five years. And he always had an open door for everybody and anybody. And he makes terrific food and he entertained a lot of people for a lot, many, many years. My condolences to Frank's, to Mrs. Serna because she's a relative and Frank's part of the family. And it was like a weekend that special to everybody here in Bedford. Secondly, Memorial Day was beautiful. We had a beautiful day. It was a little bit hot, but everybody made it down Broadway and most of us made it up Broadway. It was too bad, I cheated. I was in a golf cart with Dunn, but I'll tell you what, if you didn't have sunscreen on, that sun will catch you. But afterwards, the ceremony down at the cemetery was very good. We had a very accomplished speaker. And then we all left in one of our ways and I hope everybody had a good day after that because I know we did. And then I got the honor of doing baked beans again for many, many gentlemen and women from VA Hospital. And I am looking forward to doing that every year. This year, the, it was twenty pounds of baked beans from my house for them. And that made me feel good because I did a part that I always wanted to do. The next thing, round one of the first cuttings of the grass has been done in a lot of places where it really could. And I want to say thank you to the service department for whoever they have doing the grass that they did a good job. And lastly, I usually say something will go down, but you know, tonight I didn't. I don't think it's gonna be. Everybody usually goes out for ice cream in the summer because they love ice cream. There's a place in one of our sister cities, which is Aurora, and there was a sign in front of the shop saying, "If you think you're important, say or give a kind word to someone else." And I think that kind of struck home because you know what? The best thing you can do is if you might remember a person because they're special, you do with them at one time and they'll never forget them. Thank you. Have a good evening and a good week.
Thank you. Mrs. Junutis.
Thank you. Heather mentioned the playground program. I think that's an unbelievable deal and service to the community. Anyone who's interested in that should look into it. It's just a great, great, great deal. I'd like to congratulate the Economic Development Department for obtaining the four hundred thousand dollar development grant. That was really significant and extremely helpful to the city. And I do have a question for Mr. Gambosi. Is that your collection basket there?
I was wondering what that was too. I had no idea.
For late days, for example.
Great job, I think.
Him, but mainly I wanted to congratulate the fastest young man in the state of Ohio, Mr. Kishan Jones, who just won the state championship in the state of Ohio for the two hundred meter race. That is unbelievable and for, you know, really an honor to all us old Bedford Bearcats. So, congratulations to Mr. Jones. That was unbelievable race. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty.
Yeah, I also want to touch on the grass situations. I'm planning to announce that most of it's really all cut in the neighborhood, my neighborhood at least. I've been on them left and right. And I think it ran out today and I see two still, one on William Street, one on Norfield. Other than that, it's been pretty, pretty cut very well. I'm glad to hear that Michelle's done a great job getting on these people for us and all we can do is report it and she's been taking care of it. And also Lori, when Michelle's not around, I know you probably have something to do with the two, but it's definitely, it's looking nice. I'm actually, I'm glad. I'm driving through the neighborhood and it's like, finally, we got some of this grass cut around here because it's been, it was terrible. It really was. And also just to remind everybody, we got tree limbs, you put them outside, you gotta call the service department. I know a lot of my people like that and stop and tell them, I've done it for them, but you gotta remember to do it yourself. I can't be around all the time to do it, but I'll do it as much as I can, but that's another thing that needs taking care of that too. The next first month or first week of every month and you gotta get on the list, so you gotta call and get that taken care of. And also, I've called the police department a couple of times, like we said the last meeting, when there's people putting on garbage ahead of time and I've been cleaning that up too. It's like they've been coming out, they've been taking it back. So, once again, we don't need garbage out five days before your actual date. So, that's another thing I've been doing and so far, so good. End of report.
Thank you. And everybody's touched on one of the nice Memorial Day parade we had and of course, our condolences to the Serna family. Not only was he just a business owner, they were there for over sixty years, long time to be anywhere. And he was just one of a kind, he could help anybody and he's hardly gonna, gonna be missed. condolences again to the family. Let's get on with the business. For December ninety-six eleven dash eighteen.
An ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the city of Bedford and Motor Cars Accura Arm Performance Hub L O C and authorizing execution of that agreement and declaring an emergency.
A motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Junutis. Call the roll.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Junutis.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Saunders. Mike.
Volvo Accura Motor Cars is one of the last dealerships that was looking to do substantial remodeling. They were finalizing the sale of their building. They were previously, previously leasing it for many years from Mr. Seidman. Since acquiring that property, they have put together plans to redo the entire showroom, construct a freestanding car wash facility as well as improvements to the service bay. They had come to the city for tax abatement and based on the fact that it was not all new construction, but renovations and remodeling, still significant dollars, six figures investments. We proposed a ten-year, forty-nine percent tax abatement for this company.
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Junutis.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six twelve dash eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal of Next Gen Restoration Inc. for the repairs at Ellenwood and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Junutis.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike, again.
This is the remainder of the contracts that we will need to finish the project. This is for all of the ceiling replacement of the previous ceilings that were taken down to remove all of the asbestos. Contractor will come in, he'll have to drywall the entire hallway area of that center based on building code and fire rating from the second floor. All the subsequent rooms on that floor will be drop ceilings. If you remember, we're balancing the install of the electrical contract that was previously passed. The electrical contractor has been in there. We've made changes to fixture areas and, you know, pulling the new wire and all of the lining. They're now backing off. The ceiling company will come in. They had estimated it could take them about three weeks to complete. And then the electrical contractor will be back there to put up all of the fixtures. Those fixtures are in the process of being delivered to the center now. And as everybody recalls, all of the electrical costs will be covered by a grant through NOPE. So, this figure is what the city's piece of this project is going to cost. This will come out of our capital line item, a capital line item we have worked over the last few years to increase upwards of over a million dollars. And I think when, you know, hopefully when we get in there in about six weeks, we're gonna plan a little event around that. It'll be, when you take a step back and look at what we actually spent, the difference it's gonna make is gonna be substantial.
This is good. This bid was about twelve thousand dollars less than the closest one. That's good. Call the roll, please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Junutis.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-six thirteen dash eighteen.
An ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-eight nineteen dash oh six, section one nine one three dot oh seven B entitled Minimum Design Requirements for Residential or Commercial Buildings and Structures and Related Parking Lots, Drives, Walks, Equipment and Apertances and declaring an emergency.
And we have a motion for first reading by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike, do I just touch on that for a little bit?
Sure. As everybody knows, we've been working over the last few years with Tickers Creek Watershed. They provide various assistance with us in cleaning up certain areas. They came out, they did a workshop last, last two weeks ago. In previous years, they have recommended, although there isn't anything in our ordinance right now prohibiting rain barrels and rain gardens, there's nothing actually in there approving them and requiring them to be done to a certain capacity. The recommendation is that we get something on record authorizing them and allow property owners or other individuals looking to do something, the availability of potential grant money and other things of that nature. So, this is our first draft of that piece to allow rain gardens and rain barrels.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders. Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Mizek.
Yes.
Junutis.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
And that brings us to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, any comment.
Bethosio Stewart, ninety-three Avalon. I have a little presentation tonight, but first I want to thank you for the shredder. That is such a great service that you do for us. I don't know if anyone thanked you last meeting, but you got like seven bags of old income tax from me. I appreciate it. A year ago at this meeting, Strategic Planning presented its plan to council. And so, since it's been a year, I'd like to give you a quick little update. Thirty-three citizens created the action plans for the following strategies, teens, crime and safety, economic development, recreation and quality of life. The group has sponsored two citywide events and a third event was scheduled for May fourth but was canceled because it was not a good date for the high school to participate. So, we were very disappointed after we did a lot of planning, but hopefully we'll be able to maybe do it next year. The last time we met as a whole group was in March where we gave updates on individual strategies, shared information, and we worked on planning that May event. The first strategy, but they're not in any order, is teens. Erica Nottingham, many of you know, who's sitting right over there, was a member of the committee and she's also the teen librarian. And she is busy laying the groundwork with teen leaders currently to work toward making their first strategy a reality, which was to create a teen advisory board. When the May teen event was canceled, she was contacted by Strategic Planning because we want to support another activity or an event or work in collaboration with the library because the strategic planning as a whole, not just that strategy, really believe in giving the teens in this community, well, wonderful, exciting, fun, educational things to do. The second strategy, crime and safety committee. A personal safety class was provided in September along with the CPR training in February. The city's website, which was part of their strategy, we know you guys are currently working on, which is great. We have also volunteered, if it's still going on, because you said Ellenwood was not gonna be open, but the committee as a whole has volunteered with the rec department to be your volunteers and staff you on your August seventh night out with the police night. So, that's something we're also committed to. However, the committee has two action plans, which are still a priority to them, which are not currently going on. They are the action plan to establish a citywide safety board. Following the same protocol that exists with other city boards and commissions, with an attempt to get a resident from each ward, council members should nominate residents from each ward. The safety board should also consist of a representative from the following areas, businesses, safety forces, school system, clergy, et cetera. The safety board should utilize the expertise and time and input of the valued members. The members should make recommendations to the administration on various safety and crime concerns. The other action plan that we all agreed as a whole in March, which was important, is their plan for Know Your Neighbor Program. Council members should organize meet and greet type activities. Examples include block parties, ice creams, socials, things like that. Utilize the water bill to try and welcome new residents to the neighborhood. Organize neighborhood cleanup events and organize volunteer groups to assist and check on elderly neighborhoods. So, those two action plans are really important to that strategy and the group as a whole. Third strategy, economic development. This committee has been very busy and was instrumental in the fall in the advertising of the downtown being the top fifteen historical downtowns in the country, got the banner. They also worked very hard with Channel Eight to develop the program on Tim Taylor. They currently have a lot of exciting news that they told us about in March, but none of it is finalized, so unfortunately, I'm not allowed to tell you about it tonight. But it's all good stuff and they'll be sharing it with the city as soon as they get a little farther in the process. The fourth strategy, recreation. This plan probably had, this strategy had the most actual action plans. They are happy to see that the updating of technology's going on and that the two gentlemen, Aaron and Mike, are working on asbestos. We've met with them several times. I'm really impressed with them. They've worked on several of our events with us and they seem like really wonderful guys and they believe in a lot of our action plans, so it's going slow for them and slow for us. We believe that a lot of those programs will be happening, hopefully soon. They're particularly interested in the Babes and Buddies Program that they suggested and also having activities and programs for the every age group because we know the previous department did not have that. The last strategy was the neighborhood quality of life. The committee has volunteered as a whole to pass out welcome packets with Mike and host. A year ago, we offered and we're still willing to do it, Mike, but it just hasn't happened yet, but I heard it's gonna be soon. The action plan also that they would still like to see happen is the citizens volunteer program. That's a top priority for that particular strategy. And it's a very short one. It says, "Council members should organ," oh wait, that's right, quality of life. Develop a new citizens volunteer program. City will maintain newly created volunteer database and oversee the volunteer program, placing volunteers in positions as needed. City will create a form for residents seeking volunteer assistance. We all know, I'm sure we agree, that Bedford's got a lot of talented citizens who are very willing to give up their time and their hobbies and their expertise and their professions. So, we know the rec department's a little behind on some of this, but still, if the city could develop the volunteer form, perhaps put it in the water bill suggested, by the time you get those all back, I'm sure Mike and Aaron can create a volunteer database and so we're ready to use those volunteers as soon as possible. So, in closing, the city has been helpful. You've helped us a lot with waiving of fees and a few of our events, which we're very preached about. Mostly everyone up there has served on the committee or is serving on the committee or attended one of our meetings, so we know that you're supportive. action plans have either no cost or very little cost to them, and they're so important because I had a discussion with someone recently, and sometimes people get frustrated, we all do, things don't happen as fast as we like. Or we've, you know, offered a volunteer, and then we don't get a call back, or maybe that activity hasn't happened. And though we'd like to think everybody will stay around and wait for that opportunity, it's just not realistic. Some people, if they volunteer and they're not used, they'll take their volunteer elsewhere. And that's just the way it is. So like I said, thank you for your time, and respectfully hope that some of these things can become a reality soon. There's twelve members of Strategic Planning, if I counted right, in the room today, and two other people who have either become a new member or have attended a meeting, and I appreciate everyone coming out, and some of them they want to give you an update or not, I'm not sure, but we really would like to see these things happen. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate all the work everybody's doing on that. Thank you. And one little word of advice, don't plan anything with the schools in May. I tried to do a couple things, and May is just a crazy month, just for FYI.
Yeah, well, every month is crazy, though.
Oh, they are. May was, I was with the superintendent, and we were trying to get a day to do something, and it just didn't happen.
Well, it was an event that was weather dictated, and we also couldn't, you know, we had restrictions with Ellenwood, so it just kind of had to be May, because the schools are out in June, July, and August, which is even better.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have visual aids today. Sarah K. Nottingham is representing today the Southeast Branch Library. So a couple things I want to showcase, actually, even though there was kind of a segue there, Beth did say that I'm the teen librarian there, but I work closely. We have an entirely new children's department. We have three children's librarians that are new to our branch, and some of the stuff they're rolling out is just really awesome, so I wanted to showcase that for them this evening. But before we get started, I want to let everybody know that the Southeast Branch is a summer lunch library, meaning starting next Monday, June eleventh through August tenth, Monday through Friday, we will have a free bagged lunch for children eighteen years old and younger, so it's a free lunch from eleven forty-five to twelve thirty, Monday through Friday, through all of summer. We do invite parents to come, but obviously, we serve the youth first, and then maybe we might have some leftover, but really, the program is subsidized for children. Some things coming up, starting this Saturday, we have a new music and movement program called Shake It Up Saturdays. So it is geared towards more of your dancing, singing, and rhythm, as well as storytelling. So that's something new on Saturday, starting at two o'clock. We also have revamped our family storytimes on Wednesdays at six-thirty. It's time for kids, so these are going to be a lot more fun than the traditional ones that we've had. We're starting also, once a month, a Saturday STEM program for ages seven to ten, and so STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math, so they'll have more hands-on, mini build of learning environment for kids to kind of tinker and try some new things. With that said, the Bedford City schools that came to six were given something new this, this school year. For summer, for the summer slide, they were actually given all of their reading books through a scholastic pack. And so our children's department is developing what we want to call extension activities that go along with their summer reading. So K to six students can come on Tuesdays, starting next Tuesday, from four to five through August fourteenth. So every week, there'll be something that kind of enriches what they're learning over the summer. So that's with our children's department. That's a lot that they're just doing on their own. Good and bad news, we're offering four summer camps at Southeast, and three of them are full with waiting lists, but we still have one open, and that's geared towards teens, Discover New Potential Camp, which are for girls ages fifteen and eighteen. We do still have some space available. There's a program through Get Worker Fit, as well as sponsored by First Tee, so we will be incorporating some golf somehow at the Southeast Branch. And we're also, our volunteer program is growing. It's a volunteer program for youth. For, usually I take kids around grade four and five through high school. And come visit us this Saturday. We will be at the Strawberry Festival and have our own photo booth and promoting our summer reading, and you can come and ask me questions or whatever, but really, the youth are going to be there. And if you've noticed, we've cleaned up the front of the library space. We did the neglected Butterfly Garden, Hope to Resurrect pack. The Bedford Garden Club did donate some things for that, but we're still working on it. But talking about summer reading, I brought, this is where the visual aid comes in. So the summer reading program has started. If you haven't signed up, I apologize. We did have Mitchell's Ice Cream voucher, but we're out, so, so next time you'll have to get here sooner. But the board, so if you register, you get a cool game board, and this just isn't for kids. Adults can do this, too. It's to promote sixteen hours of reading, so you start, and you have a game board, so you can cross it out. My son prefers little stickers. And at the midpoint, if you come back and visit us, you get Chipotle. So come in and visit us, tracking, midpoint, that's eight hours, you get Chipotle. So the kids get a free kids meal. Adults, you get buy one, get one burrito coupon. And then at the end, the kids get a book to keep. The adults, you get a satisfaction of reading for sixteen hours and four math activities. But there's also, at the midpoint, at the final, if you do complete things, you do get entered into our larger raffle. Last year's prizes included family memberships to local museums, the Cleveland Zoo, tickets to Playhouse Square, some pretty good stuff. And the librarians who are avid readers can't win, so you have a really good chance of completing this board, and you can do it more than once. So it's not just reading, you know, a book. It could be reading blogs, magazines, listening to audiobooks in the car, reading to your grandchildren and children, so you should do it. And I hate to hijack all the time, but once again, we are, we have some computer programs rolling out. And yeah, we're bringing back the altered books program. That always feels, you know, like we take a book and it's folded fun. Yeah, it feels, so sign up for that. I have here our new summer brochure for June, July, and August. I'll leave some over there. Thank you for giving me the time.
Oh, terrific.
Yeah.
Terrific.
Cool.
That, that library does so much more than we realize. It's, it's full all the time. It's really good. Thank you.
Kathy Williams, four-nine-one Lamson. I received phone calls within the past couple of weeks with all the work that we're doing at Ellenwood, that the neighbors are complaining about the drugs in the area where the pavilion is, and in that parking lot, and I had a phone call right before I came. Are there motion lights under the pavilion?
There are motion lights, and part of the renovations, as well as there's going to be security cameras being put up.
Okay, go ahead.
All of that's all being done. Our, our actual, our staff, when the ceilings were taken down and the asbestos was removed, we actually went in there and ran all the cabling, and we had previously, in last year, knowing we were going to be embarking on this project, we had acquired security cameras, so we have them going not only inside the building, we have them at both entrances, we have them right behind in that little alcove by the concession stand where people may congregate late at night, as well as down by the pavilion. So that'll also help. But our, our police department's aware of some of that, and we can, I can have a conversation.
Yeah, I guess over the weekend, it was like horrendous. So they knew I was coming, so they called, and I said I'd mention it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You might want to call nine-one-one when they see that.
But it's so fast that you call.
Yeah, I know, they, they know before you do.
Very long. I mean, I know on my street.
But even, even if they call, at least it sets a, a time.
By the time I would call on my street, and even, which is, when they see the officer pulling out of the driveway of Reed Court, all of a sudden, the music goes down, they slide underneath, so am I supposed to run to the street, you know, and do one of those? I can't. And, you know, I still have the problem across the street, and it, it really is a thorn to me when we were told it was small potatoes. It's a quality of life issue. I don't, yeah, I'll talk to you after. The quality of life, it doesn't matter, because when you see that, that starts to just deteriorate your neighborhood. And, you know, for the longest time, we took down license plates and took no avail. So not small potatoes.
Thank you.
Frank Spiker, twenty William Street, Mayor, Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to advise, on Northfield Road, I was driving across just north of Solon today on the northbound side, there's a pretty good-sized swale there, and there was also one not too long ago on the southbound side, just south of Avery. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, because in case there's something going on, but the swale just on the other side of North, off Solon Road on the northbound side of Northfield is, is pretty bad, just so you know. Thank you.
That whole intersection's bad.
What's that?
That whole intersection's bad in Solon Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeff Esbury, seventy-one Eldred. I want to congratulate Jen and the department for securing that, the grant. Couple questions, though. Is there a timeframe when that money has to be utilized?
You're, you're told technically it's a year, but you have had the ability, at least in the past, there's been the ability to get that extended. It's all based on how quickly we can work with the land bank, and some of these structures to become, be able to be taken down. It is not going to be an issue for all but one of them. We're actually partnering with another organization on one of the pieces of property. That may take a little bit of time, but I, I believe we'll be able to get a little bit of extension if we need, if we need to. You know, the portion that we applied for is only maybe a third of the cost to take a specific building down, so we're trying to work with other entities to try to get it resolved. But we secured as much as we could. The interesting thing with this grant is you can always non-perform something. Basically, you can always say, look, we only spent three hundred and not four hundred, and there's no marks against you. What you can't do is, you can't say, hey, we need more, or we need to add a property. You can't go back once it closes. So all of the properties that we, that we fully control, or at least are in the process of controlling, won't be an issue. The Moon Glow, the residential properties, all these residential properties, they're obviously not occupied and have been vacant for some time. One building is going to be a little bit of a challenge, but we're, we started working through that, so.
Because I, I, I don't know what the current figures are, but I think you read a couple years ago, when the county released a whole bunch of money for demos, that it was averaging around twelve or thirteen thousand per residential house.
Yeah, I think a little less, but close. That's probably a pretty good estimate.
So is there, I mean, is there enough properties in Bedford to, to utilize all those funds?
Yes, well, actually, we, we put in for, I believe there's five or six residential. There's one property that there used to be a home on, the home blew up years ago from a gas leak, and there's been a garage sitting there forever. People walked away, we're going to use it to take the garage down. The Moon Glow is a commercial property. We were actually, the last two rounds ago, when we got awarded the six hundred thousand, we were the first community to get a commercial property, and we used that for the property off of Harrison, the old manufacturing building. And we were able to get that demolished, remediated, and we actually sold that property to Gandy for about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Those funds were used in the purchase of the Moon Glow property for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So all of that property with the Moon Glow, you know, really went on only into that for about fifty thousand dollars. At the time, they weren't saying that, because that's, you know, that deal wasn't completed. But we did get the commercial property for the Moon Glow this time, which we're going to get that taken down. And the other property that I mentioned, that we're working with another organization, we have over two hundred thousand committed towards that down, so we should get a good amount taken down soon.
Okay, all right. Again, congratulations.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeff Esbury, seventy-one Eldred. I want to congratulate Jen and the department for securing that, the grant. Couple questions, though. Is there a timeframe when that money has to be utilized?
You're, you're told technically it's a year, but you have had the ability, at least in the past, there's been the ability to get that extended. It's all based on how quickly we can work with the land bank, and some of these structures to become, be able to be taken down. It is not going to be an issue for all but one of them. We're actually partnering with another organization on one of the pieces of property. That may take a little bit of time, but I, I believe we'll be able to get a little bit of extension if we need, if we need to. You know, the, a portion that we applied for is only maybe a third of the cost to take a specific building down, so we're trying to work with other entities to try to get it resolved. But we secured as much as we could. The interesting thing with this grant is you can always non-perform something. Basically, you can always say, look, we only spent three hundred and not four hundred, and there's no marks against you. What you can't do is, you can't say, hey, we need more, or we need to add a property. You can't go back once it closes. So all of the properties that we, that we fully control, or at least are in the process of controlling, won't be an issue. The Moon Glow, the residential properties, all these residential properties, they're obviously not occupied and have been vacant for some time. The one building is going to be a little bit of a challenge, but we're, we started working through that, so.
Because I, I, I don't know what the current figures are, but I think you read a couple years ago, when the county released a whole bunch of money for demos, that it was averaging around twelve or thirteen thousand per residential house.
Yeah, I think a little less, but close. That's probably a pretty good estimate.
So is there, I mean, is there enough properties in Bedford to, to utilize all those funds?
Yes, well, actually, we, we put in for, I believe there's five or six residential. There's one property that there used to be a home on, the home blew up years ago from a gas leak, and there's been a garage sitting there forever. People walked away, we're going to use it to take the garage down. The Moon Glow is a commercial property. We were actually, the last two rounds ago, when we got awarded the six hundred thousand, we were the first community to get a commercial property, and we used that for the property off of Harrison, the old manufacturing building. And we were able to get that demolished, remediated, and we actually sold that property to Gandy for about a hundred and ten thousand dollars.